I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. And welcome to all the parents who came with your students this evening as well. Glad to see you here tonight.
If we have a motion to approve the agenda.
Oh, actually, before we do that, I want to say that item one from closed session is being tabled to a future meeting. And that contrary to what the schedule says, closed session will probably begin closer to 8:50 than 8:00 P.M.
Superintendent can't add.
The superintendent can't. As long as it's not the CBO who can't add.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
No opposition? Okay, and now we have our Fernando Rivera Spirit Squad here to give us a special presentation about what you do. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Cassia Yureta and I'm co-captain of the Fernando Rivera Spirit Squad. This is very important to me because it teaches me to be a leader. With Spirit Squad, I am becoming confident, independent, and focused. Many people think that Spirit Squad is just about the uniform and the dancing. But our squad is much more than that. It teaches us skills in problem solving and cooperation and promotes a positive school climate. It's all about our passion, our love for our school, and a desire to serve. It's all about our willingness to work hard for Fernando. And now my co-captain Hannah will tell you a few more details about what we do and why we do it.
What does it mean to be on the FRS Spirit Squad? We love being on the Spirit Squad because it builds up our teamwork. Cheerleading has taught us to have trust in people. We've come to learn that working together really means a lot. We start the year off at our annual cheer camp. During cheer camp, we reviewed classic cheer moves, stunting like splits and cartwheels, and basic dance moves. We also got to introduce ourselves, so we learned a lot more about each other and how to work together. Also, the Spirit Squad is hard work. We are motivated and determined to share our positive attitude throughout the whole school and to promote FRS in our community. This takes time and effort. The Spirit Squad has practiced one to two times a week. And practice lasts one and a half to two hours. Practices will consist of stretching and conditioning, team-building activities, learning cheers, dances, and team meetings. No matter how long the practices are or how tiring learning a new routine is, we still have fun. I wanted to become a part of the Spirit Squad because I wanted to be a part of a team. I also wanted to feel that rush of excitement as we complete a cheer or a dance. Most importantly, I want to represent my school and be a proud member of a squad. That's what it means to us to be a Spirit Squad member slash cheerleader. In conclusion, the Spirit Squad takes leadership in promoting the Fernando Attitude, which is be kind, be responsible, always be the best you can be. That's the Fernando Attitude and the choice is yours. Thank you.
Does anybody have anything you'd like to ask our great representatives?
I was interested in the team-building activities that you did. So you said you introduced yourselves. Did you do it in a creative way? How did that happen?
Stand up to the microphone and answer.
We usually sit in a circle and we have, we choose three questions off a sheet to answer about ourselves. And we usually start off, "Hi, my name is Cassia Yureta," and we answer those three questions.
All right. Thanks. That was the only question that I had. Good job.
I just want to say that we really appreciate what you do for our school and for the two of you and for your assistant with the flag salute. We do have some certificates of acknowledgement. And I'll let you gentlemen all go down and like, no, raise. Say, Joseph, you go.
Nice work.
Thank you.
And for Cassia Bretta?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank all of you for coming and sharing that. And I thank your fellow Spirit Squad members who came and offered you moral support while you stood up and spoke. I know that takes courage and appreciate you doing that. Thanks to all the parents who brought you here tonight. Okay, that brings us to the communications portion of our agenda. Begin with administrator comments.
I'll start. First off, I'd like to say that I enjoyed going to the back-to-school night last week at Daniel Webster and at Thomas Edison. And I spent some time speaking with one of our teachers in the TIC class. There she is. And it was a learning experience for me, what goes on there. And I'm very excited that we have it and we're able to do that. On another note, we're able to do that partly because of our funding, of course. And our funding is affected by our free and reduced population. And so I want to remind everybody out there and here and to spread the word that again, we have the free and reduced application for everybody, whether they would qualify or not, in order to enter into a drawing with lots of prizes. Disneyland tickets, Great America tickets, Santa Cruz Beach Boardwalk tickets, Cold Stone gift certificates, theater gift certificates, a whole bunch of them. $3,000 worth of prizes donated to us by Aramark. So put in your applications. They need to be in by the end of this month. And it doesn't matter if you qualify for free and reduced or not. If you put your application in, you will be entered into the drawing. And the drawing will be in October. So please, everybody do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I also visited Westlake and Woodrow Wilson for back-to-school night. And I was really impressed with the way the teachers shared the transition to the Common Core and answered parent questions because it's a big change. And so I was really impressed with how they handled that. And next Thursday is back-to-school night for middle schools. And so just to remind families to attend those.
On the back-to-school night theme, I want to thank the staffs at both FD Roosevelt and at Tobias School. It was great to see the tremendous turnout of parents and to see all the hard work that our teachers are already doing with our students. So it's really been off to a good start.
I will share later.
Any comments and commendations from board members?
Correspondents, I did attend the San Mateo School Board Association meeting that happened this weekend. And what we are putting together is a pathway to success. So starting from basically pre-K all the way to 16th. How do we get there? Well, as a son of immigrants, we didn't have the luxury of understanding the way the system is here in the States before my generation. Now, what we want to do is for the next generation is like, here is how you get from point A to point graduation. And what we're coming together is me, Kalima Salahuddin, and Karen Schwartz of the Community College District are getting together to create something called Pathways to Success. We haven't put all the things together yet, but albeit tours of the Community College system or getting exposed to the Community College system. But how you could go from pre-K to middle school to the high school system and continue the process into a cost-effective way of going to the Community College system and into the UC system. These are all public schools. These are all, they're all, they all have financial aid and they're all possible options for all our children in the district. So it is a way for us to all understand that after high school or after middle school or after anything else, so what do I do with my life? Well, guess what? Here is a direct pathway to get there. Don't even think. This is the way to get to a college or university of your dreams that has already been vetted and the best way to get there and the most cost-effective way to get there. So, coming up soon, we will have some kind of presentation. But I want parents and students to also understand that do not let money or anything else stop you going from the highest level of education. Nothing, 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 nothing. You can get there. So.
Thank you. And I have nothing to add myself this evening. So do we have any speaker cards for persons wishing to address the board? No? Then Mr. Vidalis, any correspondence and comments?
Yes, so I too had an opportunity to visit a couple of our school sites for back-to-school night. We, I was at both Susan B. Anthony and John F. Kennedy schools. And again, as previous administrators had mentioned, the ability of teachers to concisely and effectively communicate the Common Core state standards to our families was, I was very impressed by that. Another thing that I was impressed by, and I always am whenever I see this, is the close link that I was able to observe in classrooms between some of the most recent professional development our teachers received this summer and what was evident in practice in the classrooms. And that was great to see. And I was proud of that. I just wanted to sort of touch a little bit with what Mr. O'Tidey shared. It's sort of related on the theme of showing up and being seen and being heard. Certainly, we want our students to show up to school on a daily basis, to be there, to be able to receive and benefit from the quality instruction happening in our classrooms. And I think this fall, all of us adults have a great opportunity to demonstrate to our students what it means to show up. And it starts with registering to vote. If we have not yet registered to vote, continues with actually showing up into the voting booth and voting. And if we don't do mail-in ballots and we can sit at the kitchen table with our kids to vote with them and show them what it's like. All of the polling places do allow children to walk in with their parents, so they get that feeling. And so showing up is very important. It's important for school. It's important for life. And it's important for making sure that our representatives are the representatives that we select because we showed up.
Thank you, Mr. Vidalis. So I do want to let parents know if the students do need to go home, you have the right to leave when you need to. I might suggest that you may have some interest in seeing what we're doing with the presentation coming up in just a minute on the Math and English Language MELD project. So don't hesitate, though, at any point when you look at your watch and say, "We've got to go home and finish the homework and go to bed." We understand. Yeah. Us two, did you say? I'm sorry, Mr. Vidalis, you do not have that option. Okay. So could we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Most approve of consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we need a roll call vote on that.
Mr. O'Tidey?
Aye.
Mr. Ali?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Dr. Douglas?
Aye.
Thank you. And that does bring us to Section Two, Curriculum and Instruction. Item one, the Math/English Language Development Project. And I believe Debbie Borda, Ms. Debbie Borda will be speaking to us. Our math program director.
Good evening. Thank you for welcoming me and being open to hearing how we're doing. I don't know how you follow such cuteness, so I would like to propose next time that we switch order. So we are currently beginning our fifth year in partnership for the Math and ELD project. That partnership includes our district, the Lawrence Hall of Science from UC Berkeley, and the Silicon Valley Math Initiative. And it's been funded for the last five years as well by the Silicon Valley Community Foundation. As we've continued to do this work, we've had some teachers stay the same, some have changed. It's continued to grow and we continue to refine our efforts and our work based on the evidence that we're seeing with the project as well as what the initiatives are in the school district and the Common Core. One, two things that stay constant are our goals. And the first goal being to reduce the disparity between English language learners and their peers in mathematics so that they're able to be successful in college and career readiness pathways in the high school and also increasing our knowledge as teachers and educators about how we do that in the classroom. When we think about that, what we're trying to focus on is what we want students to do with students and how they're engaging in the mathematics and in their classrooms. And so as we transition towards the Common Core, the first thing and our major emphasis is how students are communicating their understanding. And so we are doing everything that we can to work with our English language learners as well as other students on being able to communicate with academic language as well as to be able to revise their explanations, which is something that's very challenging for me as an adult. And also constructing viable arguments to communicate why, with evidence, their solutions make sense. Sub to that is we want students to have productive struggles so that they do not give up in the sense-making. We also want them to be given high levels of mathematics, grade-level mathematics. While they're learning their language, we do not want to dumb down the mathematics because the language is being acquired. And with those things, we're trying to develop students that have a growth mindset so that they see the potential with effort in all that they're doing instead of thinking it's, "I'm born this way and I can't change my math gene or the language gene."
So how do you do that?
It's lifelong work. We, well, one of the things we do is we give them problems and we continue to give them high-level thinking problems and persevere with it. And rather than giving them something easy and overscaffold it, which is a message that we don't think you can do higher math. So these are two of our fifth-grade teachers that are in the project this year. This is a picture from them last year. What they are doing is they are engaging in a formative assessment lesson where students are going to be working on matching different representations of fractions. And the more representations you're able to communicate and understand, the deeper your understanding is. And when we work with the teachers in our release days, we do this type of activity and then they replicate it back in their classroom. So they're anticipating students' mathematical needs through this exercise as well as the language that they'll need in order to be successful on this task. The people that are involved, we have 24 fifth through eighth-grade teachers this year. They're representing 10 of our 14 schools. When we first started doing this five years ago, we had 10 teachers. And the grant currently only funds 20. And there was, we didn't want to stop the interest of those who are wanting to participate. And so sites took on the cost to send the additional teachers to participate in this work. Our math ELD coaches participate. And then we also have three staff members that we work with through the Lawrence Hall of Science. They have, these are the agreements that we've all come to in our work together. And we do work with the teachers negotiating this. So this is what we propose, and then if it ends up being too much, we adjust as we need in order to meet their needs as well as the students' needs. So all of these teachers attended an institute this summer. And then they will have three follow-up sessions. And those are October 15th, November 6th, and January 21st, where they are released from the classroom. And we do professional development all day. You are all welcome to attend any and all of them for any part of the day, all of the day. I know a few years ago, Dr. Douglas came and it was really wonderful to have her participating there. The agreements that we're focusing on is that the teachers agree to implement the strategies that they're learning. And those are some of the ideas that we've been focusing on in order to help students meet the goals that we've suggested. We also work on how do we design lessons that keep the cognitive demand high and provide access to the math as well as the language. And with that, we are working in conjunction with the goals of our ELD department on defining what are our language goals for a lesson in addition to what are the math goals for a lesson. This year, we've added that our grade-level teams, they meet outside of our time together. And they can do this either face-to-face or virtually at least once between each of these cycles in order to continue the work that was started. So we're trying to develop a stronger capacity of collaboration across the district as opposed to just within those times. We also ask, and this is probably the hardest one and causes the most angst, is to be open to teach in front of peers. At each one of these release days, we go into classrooms. And one of the teachers teaches a lesson with others of us observing. And we talk about what the kids are doing and what the strategies were that we used and how we learned from that so that we can take it back to our classrooms. So it's a hands-on learning experience. We go into their classrooms as coaches in between these cycles as well, informally as well as formally if a team has also wanted to be coached. Similar to what we do with the regular coaching program in the district where it's more intensive and they have at least three times where we meet with them during the month as opposed to just one time in between these cycles. So I wanted to share with you a little video clip. It's only a minute of a student, a couple students in a fifth-grade class in our district that are working on that activity that we just saw. And so you'll see that they keep looking up at something, but you don't see what they're looking. And what they're looking at is actual the language support that the teacher has for them so that they can communicate during their partner talk during this activity.
No, C2 is equivalent to 3/10 because it shows 3 are shaded in and there's 10 in total. So it's, that equals 3/10. Do you agree?
C4 is equivalent to 10/12 because there's 10 that are shaded in and all are 12.
I agree.
So this one is equivalent to 10/12 because 10 are shaded in out of the 12.
C8 is equivalent to 1/2 because it shows 5 shaded out of the 10 and 5 is half of 10. And 5/10 is equivalent to 1/2.
Card C4 and 10/12 is equivalent because there are 10 pieces shaded over here and 2 left.
There's the, there's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 6 equal pieces here and 6 equal pieces here. And that's a half.
So are you guys working together?
Probably the best part of the whole presentation. And so just showing a little bit about where we are in the last two years as a snapshot. We are looking at our progress with the MARS task. It's a little bit challenging to look from year to year because the MARS tasks aren't the same every year as it would be when we looked at a CST test. The tasks themselves change. But I also wanted to include the other grade levels that we have data for because one of the impacts that this work has had on us is not only are we working more intensively with the teachers that participate in MELD, but although we've learned, we've taken back to the coaching that we do with teachers, no matter what grade that they're teaching, as well as all the PD that we've done with our teachers the last, particularly the last year. We took a lot of the strategies back as we transitioned towards the Common Core. So regardless of your grade level, the strategies that we're learning when we're working with this group of teachers, we're taking district-wide as well. So you can, I think, see some of the impact of that in the other grade levels about increase in English language development performance on the MARS task, which are rigorous problem-solving types of assessments for students. Because another couple of teachers working on that same task and getting towards wrap-up here. We always ask for feedback at the end of every session and at the end of a year. And this was one of the questions we asked our teachers at the end of last year. So I just extracted a couple people's responses about what they felt was helping them to teach language learners in mathematics after a year of participating in this program. So I'll let you read those. I want to read them to you.
Encouraging feedback.
We have amazing teachers in this district. And this group of people was also just, it was rewarding to work with them. So it's been really exciting. And almost all of them came back to work again this year unless they were reassigned to other grade levels or other duties such as teacher. We've lost some people for that. So as a district, our commitments to this funding are that we implement what we've proposed in the grant, which we just highlighted, that we attend quarterly network meetings. We have to submit interim and final data reports. And anything that we learn, we have an obligation to share with the network meetings that we have. Or if anything's replicable, then they can take that and essential our intellectual property and replicate it in other districts if that works. And if you have any questions?
Can you go back to the slide with the bar graph? All right, so fifth grade, sixth, seventh, that's really low, the benchmark. Has the district set a goal that we want to see those numbers go up to?
That's always a goal. So what I didn't share with here, that's pretty interesting data, is that our district, this past year in the MARS exams, actually outscored the rest of the collaborative in all but two grades. And considering our population and the other districts that are, that we are a part of that membership with, it's pretty amazing work. One of the grades that we did not outscore was fifth grade. And we talk about a lot why that might be. I can say one of the things that I feel is that that fifth-grade test is really hard. And I think that in the past, there's also been so much content to teach in fifth grade. So my hope, which I know isn't a strategy, but my hope is that with the Common Core, is we're allowed more time to go more deeply into concepts and not having to rush through things to cover, that students will have the time they need to negotiate those ideas and be able to communicate, communicate their thinking as well.
With regard to this chart, is this all of the students or is this the ELD students?
This is just EL.
That was my second question.
This is just EL.
EL students.
She took it from you.
So district-wide, those numbers should be a little higher. You would be reporting those, correct? So I look forward to seeing those.
But as a district-wide, our English language learners, we had 6% more proficient this year than we did last year. I feel like at the district-wide ones.
I see the progress and that's great.
The other one that's messy, sorry, the other one that's messy too is the eighth-grade one. You know, last year was the first year we didn't have two different classes for our eighth graders. Actually, three different classes. And it's the first time that all of our eighth graders took the eighth-grade Common Core test. And so that's something that could be, that might have an impact on the data at that level as well.
All right. And another question is economics. So you said that there were sites took on the cost themselves for those other four participants. Was there ever a request to the district to fund that? Or how did that happen?
Well, it's, Bernie, I guess he's.
No, I think if you remember, we shifted a lot of the funds down to the school site. So the school sites are, have plenty. And so when they want to do professional development, then we ask them to help fund that versus district. We do fund some things at the district level, but because we made an effort to give school sites more autonomy in terms of how to use their money, that's, it was available.
All right, so that was an option that they.
They chose it, yeah. And the district does match funds with this grant also. So the grant gives us some money, but the district. So the grant gives us some money, but the district also has to kick in money and the amount of money that sites are being asked to contribute is pretty small.
All right.
Yeah. It's basically sub-cost in a $300 stipend, so that's not, you know, extravagant.
All right, so you don't think that this is something that we should put more money aside for next year or have our budget talks?
I think that we can talk about it.
We actually have a lot of professional development happening right now. This is one portion of professional development and it's really intense and so, and it's voluntary for this.
All right, so we don't necessarily need more than 24.
I'm not sure we can handle more. Right.
All right.
That's good to know.
Right. We actually wouldn't be able, if we had more teachers, we wouldn't be able to do a release day because we only have subs enough to have about 20 to 25 teachers and now that's even been a little bit challenging.
That's a good point. That's stretching it.
All right.
Okay. Are there any further questions? Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, add a little bit Mr. Ali mentioned at the beginning. So how do you teach the growth mindset? And it certainly is a lifelong lesson as Ms. Borda mentioned, but there's also very simple things that, um, we can do as educators and that have been shown to show marked difference. One simple sentence can make a big difference in the student, telling a student that, whoa, you're really smart. You were able to answer this, this problem versus telling a student, wow, you worked really hard on this problem and I can see that that's how you got to the, and I can see your answer. That simple sentence will show magnif, big differences in a growth mindset. The students who receive the, you're really smart, they, um, they feel like that's just a thing, right? They, they are smart versus working hard. They realize that, that persistence, perseverance and that their own, what they bring to the situation makes a difference. And so several studies have been done and replicated over and over with seventh graders, you know, and they just see these amazing differences in what they're able to accomplish in the next 30 minutes based on that one sentence. So anyway, so simple things, but then also lifelong things. And I think, you know, as more has learned about this, you know, we need to communicate that with our parents because we're the ones who, who, uh, start off our kids with the, with the fixed mindset and telling them, you're so smart, you can, you know? And our kids get the sense that, okay, it's just who I am, not what I do, so.
You actually brought up a point that, um, a lot of you guys by graduation were able to see where I'm going with this, but, um, just want to ask a quick question in here. How many of you guys feel like you're bad at math? Be honest. Am I feeling bad at math? Okay, all right. Now, I want to rephrase that statement and I don't want you to ever think you're bad at math because that's not true. Do you need to work harder at math? It's different, it's a different statement. So when you start working on the mindset, if you say, well, I'm not good at math, guess what's going to happen? You're not going to be good at math. If you have to work hard at it, you can set small goals and, okay, reach those small goals and get better. So I think working on the mind and you can take that and translate to anything, not just math, but anything in life. So good point.
Yeah, it's a good takeaway for all of us parents.
Yeah, I do that while college classes, every quarter, every semester, I say, who's not good at taking tests? And people raise their hands and I kind of get on about raising their hands when that question's asked. No one's bad at taking a test, you just have to work harder at it.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Borda. That was very, very interesting. Okay, this brings us to section three, business and financial procedures and item two. Board resolution number 14 dash 09 dash 010, resolution establishing Fund 20, special reserve fund for post-employment, post-employment benefits.
Not yet.
Not, not quite yet.
Not yet.
We've got to get through a few more things before you get to talk. So do we have a motion to approve this resolution?
Do you want to hear, what, um, I think Ms. Kessler may want to explain a little bit of what, what the resolution's about too.
And then I have a speaker card too, so.
So, um, just to refresh, at the last board meeting, we went over.
No, get closer. Get closer.
Um, at the last board meeting, when we went over the budget update, um, I did talk about establishing Fund 20 for post-employment benefits. Now, we have to, in our financial statements, recognize, um, our future liability, our, our current value of our future liability. And for us, that's approximately $16 million. And we have, um, just basically assumed that, you know, we have a high fund balance and this balance could cover that should we have the need to do that. But now with the hard cap coming up, most likely if, uh, Prop 2 passes of 6% from the district, we would not be able to have those funds to be able to cover that. So before we go spending money for purposes of just spending it quickly, um, it would be prudent for us to set those sides, that, those funds aside, um, in a fund where it, we commit those funds, the board commits those funds for the purpose of paying post-employment benefits. Those funds can be uncommitted, um, through the years, um, on and off as needed if we find that we need those funds for another use. Those funds will also help us, um, with cash flow issues because we can temporarily borrow from one fund to another in order to cover, um, cash flow situations where we don't get our revenues and even 12 paychecks throughout the year. Our revenues come sporadically throughout the year. So that is, um, what this, um, establishing of the Fund 20 is all about. And the item following that is, um, funding at 50% of what our liability is from our last report. We are now doing a new, um, actuarial report. We're required to do that every two years and that report will show us what our, our new liability is. And then next year, depending on how we are financially, we can decide to, um, add more, maybe 50%, the full amount, maybe a smaller amount, maybe none at all, depending on our situation. So, but for now, I would advise to fund it 50% of the liability.
Okay.
Ms. Kessler, the, um, I don't know, it's just, how are we able to, um, create this fund? Because it sounds like just another reserve. So what makes it any different than just?
It, it's legally different.
All right.
Um, it, the way Prop 2 is written, um, it, that hard cap of a 6% reserve does not include funds that are committed for specific purposes.
And that's one of them.
And this, this actual Fund 20 is specifically for that purpose.
All right.
Um, and in the, um, language of the resolution to establish that fund, um, it is also stated that funds that are transferred in there are, um, expected to be, they, they are considered committed.
To.
Um, but the board does have the ability of uncommitting it through a resolution as well.
All right, so through a resolution. And do you know of any other districts that are establishing this right now?
Um, you know, I haven't called around the district, the districts, but I have seen that their, um, School Services of California as well as, um, s, uh, Capitol Advisors and some other, um, district, uh, education, um, groups have given this as one of their suggestions. Actually, I did it before the suggestion came out. I think I got them writing this on that. So yes, I did actually ask them the question ahead of time if it would be appropriate to do this and they said yes and then came out their articles, so.
Well, thanks, we approved it.
Yeah, sure, yes.
Just want to comment, I, I believe this is one of the smartest things ever. It shows that we are allocating already committed funds to our post-employment benefits. Now, where does this come from? Well, as you know, I worked on Wall Street for a while and Fortune 500 companies were putting this as a footnote and not really claiming it as an expense. It was just a footnote in their 10K and 10Q annual filings. Well, in reality, it is actually an expense because it is a future expense that we cannot commit that other money to anything else. So just like Wall Street, just like Fortune 500 companies, and if we look at our district as a medium-sized to large company with the many employees, the CEOs, the staff, the post-employment benefits, yes, the post-employment benefits should be allocated in a fund in which the money is guaranteed there. For example, if you're going to save money for your college, for your kids or anything else, it's not something that's, I'll just, it's just a footnote. It's not a footnote. It's going to be an expense in the future and it's going to be there. And that if Fortune 500 companies have to do it through Sarbanes-Oxley and, and as you know, all this financial drama that happened, which is going to come down to the public institutions, I hope not. Knock on wood. That we must allocate and show that the expense exists. It is not a pipe dream that the future expense of post-employment benefits is real. And where's that money going to come from? It has to come from a fund or the, a line item. Now, what's going to happen if it's not there? It's called credit crunch. And we know what happened in 2008, 2009, when everything shut down. We know when other school districts have to shut down. We know when other municipalities have to shut down. These are important. It's not something negative. It's something that has to be recognized, just like your credit card bill. Your credit card bill at home will always be there. It's not paid off until you pay it off. But you have to expense a line item in your budgeting to make sure that the funds do exist. But I think it's a great thing, idea. It's Fortune 500 companies have to do it through Sarbanes-Oxley and FAS 123 and expo, and, and expense it from the net income, which shows that they have a lower income. But also, we have to show that it's an expense with our employees in the future because it is guaranteed in pensions and benefits that we have for the future. That's why this line item is so important.
Thank you, Mr. Taddy. I do have a speaker card from Ms. Dart.
Good evening, Melinda Dart, AFT 3267. So I had a few questions. I, and I did, um, find out that other districts do have a Fund 20. But the, my question is, were we already setting some funds aside for post-retirement benefits and will they be moved to this fund? That's one of my questions.
So there, there was nothing official. We were saying that we could use the funds in Fund 17 for post-employment benefits, which is, um, there's $2 million there, but, um, that is the, those are the only funds that we had and the, there was never anything official by the board to recognize that. This makes it official.
Right. So are we moving those funds from Fund 17?
I don't really see a need to move it.
Okay.
If there's, you know, a need to use them somewhere or we could use that in the future if we wanted to move it towards, towards that, but, um, it's not something that is urgent to do at this time.
Okay.
And Fund 17 will still be considered part of the fund balance, the unrestricted fund balance as it is in the financial statements on a yearly basis.
Okay. And then there are two fund transfers tonight, right? There's a second one, which is, um, there is establishing the special reserve fund and then there's the intra-fund transfer.
That is it.
That is it.
We have to establish the fund.
First one is establishing a fund because we don't have a fund.
And then you're transferring the funds into it.
And then the second one is to transfer the funds in.
Okay.
It's opening up the bank account before you put the deposit in.
Right, okay. So my question about that was, um, um, so, um, 8 million is going from the general fund, correct? Into that? Okay. And, um, so I'm sure everyone knows that, um, we're different from, from companies out there with their CEOs in that we don't generate money, we, we provide services, right?
That's true, but when we do the compensation, it shows that as compared to a company this many people, then we do have an issue, so.
Right. No, I, I, I do understand that we have an issue, but at the same time, we have a lot of services to provide to our clients and, and a duty provide, to provide them to the students, right? So, and as you know, we have not had, uh, a rich funding stream all these years, so, I, I just, um, real, I, I'm just questioning, will we be able to meet all of our priority needs, um, even as we move this large amount of money into the general fund? And, um, and I, and I understand that, that we're doing that and we need to do something in this area, but, um, what I hope to see is that there's a process, um, that we can go through, that we, that will be transparent every year for the board to go through over, how much general fund monies are going into Fund 20 and that that's a, a process that the public and, uh, employees of the district can participate in, uh, as in, um, you know, the, the spirit of the LCFF and the LCAP. Because, um, we have a lot of competing needs in the district, so just wanted to make sure that we're not locking up money into, into another reserve that becomes untouchable when we, and that we can't provide the services we need to provide.
I'd like to say to the, I'd like to speak to the board.
Yes.
Um, first off, um, in Fund 20, it will not lock them up. If we put the funds into Fund 71, that is, um, also a post-employment benefit fund, that locks it up. You cannot, once it goes in there, you cannot take those funds out for anything. And that is why I would not recommend putting it in Fund 71. Um, the other thing that I would like to say to the board is I would never recommend something that I felt would be, uh, put the district in a financially difficult situation today or towards the future. And yes, we would be able to meet all of our financial obligations, um, whether we put these funds in there or not.
Okay, thank you very much.
Also, for the board, just a little bit of background around why we started investigating this kind of a possibility. It became, it, it's becoming a little bit, um, concerning, I think is the word, that the legislature is now, um, considering ways of, um, managing districts' reserve funds. So we don't, they haven't necessarily told us how to use it. I do not imagine that it would be far beyond their imaginations to tell us how to do it. So, um, part of the conversation Ms. Kessler and I had and we started investigating is like, look, we know we've had the $60 million of post-employment benefits that we have to fund. We know that, we've known that for several years. We've always thought our reserve funds could cover that should they, should the, should we need to pay them. In our heads, we've always known that that's where that money is. So we said, can we commit them more formally so that in case, you know, this January, February, legislators end up passing some kind of law that says you have to use it X, Y, and Z, that those funds are off the table for, for that. And, and it's not beyond my imagination to, to imagine legislators coming up with a list of ideas that reserve funds must be used for. So we just want to be able to, to formally decide that these funds, we're only committing half of them now, we have the full thing, we're not going to commit the full thing. Commit half of them now, get our actuarial study completed and then consider how to fund the remainder of it. And this is not for pensions. This is just for, um, we have a commitment, um, to our employees who've worked for us a certain number of years, that we will fund their health benefits from the time that they retire till the time they turn 65. And so it's primarily those expenses that, um, we need to set aside for, so.
I'd like to just add a little bit to that and that, um, that's exactly what it's for. It's, it's totally for that. And in some districts, for instance, my last district, there were no points, post-employment benefit obligations because the district offered none. When you left, the, you, at the end of that month, you were no longer covered and you couldn't, it didn't matter if you were with the district for 30 years. That's an option, is, is removing that benefit, um, for future people, in which case that eventually, yeah, the liability would reduce as everybody who was in it would age out, be over 65, we would have no liability. But that's not what this district has done and, um, and if we. And if we did do that, it would take many years to get rid of that liability anyway. So it's always something that a district could choose to do in the future. But that's not where we're at now. So right now, we do have post-employment benefit liabilities that we have to legally recognize.
And I think it's probably worth noting, that's not just that there's this future. I mean, we are currently paying those post-employment benefits to many people out of our general fund monies. So this is removing, separating that, so that, as Mr. Vidalis says, the legislature can't get their little mitts on it. That wasn't quite what you said, but that was what you meant. You know, and I think that, given the direction things are going, that in a sense, this is protecting our reserves from outside control, and that that's something that's very important for us to do.
Until they change the rules again.
Right. Okay, are there any further questions about the resolution to create the fund?
None.
Then could we have a motion? Nobody?
Motion to approve Board Resolution 14-09-10, Resolution Establishing Fund 20 Special Reserve Fund for Post-Employment Benefits.
We have a second.
Second.
Okay, and we need a roll call vote on that?
Mr. Otidy?
Aye.
Mr. Ali?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Dr. Douglas?
Aye.
That was unanimous. Okay, and then item three, as noted, is the resolution to actually put the funds, the $8 million, into that Fund 20.
Motion to approve 14-09-10, that's a inter-fund transfer from Fund 1 to Fund 20.
Second.
Okay, roll call again, please.
Mr. Otidy?
Aye.
Mr. Ali?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Dr. Douglas?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. And that brings us to item five, our fiscal year 2013-14 unaudited actuals. Ms. Kessler?
Thank you. I've got 20 minutes, and.
Up to 20 minutes.
Up to 20 minutes. As we have a relatively new board member, I would like to first take the opportunity to just give a little summary of what this is all about, and it can be helpful. So basically, what the year calendar looks like when it comes to the financial reports of the district, and the board's obligation to approve certain financial reports. So basically, we start out with developing a budget, which is, which has to be passed by the board by the end of June for the following year. And that is developed, it's, the development of that starts in January, February. Starts with the governor's January proposal, where he starts telling us what he is expecting to do for the following year. And then the May revise, and then district-specific information that requires a public hearing. And now it's in tandem with the LCAP, the Local Control Accountability Plan. We kind of go together, hold hands, and put together a budget and pass it. The board passes it. So that's step one. Then the state passes its budget. And then the next thing comes is the first interim. The first interim, I come to you, and I tell you what we've changed in the budget. How all the revenues have changed, all the expenditures have changed, the school year has started. And as of the end of October, it's a snapshot in time then. It's what we believe the new year, the current year will look like. We have all the teachers we've got. We know what our population is. We can take something that we looked into our crystal ball to develop our adopted budget. Now we can adjust that to be what the first interim is. So that is as of October 31st. Board has to approve it by December 15th. Then comes the second interim. It's basically the same stuff. It's what changes have been since the first interim. And that is as of January 31st, and the board has to approve it by March 15th. After that comes, we close the books. The year goes by, we close the books. We're now, we've now developed a new budget for the following year. But for the cycle of this, we come to the unaudited actuals. So what happens with the unaudited actuals is we close the books for the previous year as of June 30th. And we do all sorts of different transactions. There's a lot of work that's done. We just close those books. We bring them to you, tell you what the year looked like, and you approve them. And those are the unaudited actuals. Then what happens is, and that has to be approved by September 15th. And then what happens is the auditors come in, they audit our books, and they have to send the audited financials to the state by December 15th. The auditors do that. And the auditors come here to you, either in December or January, and you approve the audit report that they present to you. So basically, it's a two-year cycle to get one set of financials all the way through the process. So while we're working on some, we're also in others. Because obviously, we've been, we've already adopted the budget for 14-15, and I'm bringing to you the unaudited actuals for 13-14. I hope that made sense. I have this for you if you would like it. So I'll take that time off the end here. Oops. Okay, the unaudited actuals, what are they? Well, they're the financial, unaudited financial reports after we've closed the books for the previous school year. So that's from July 1st, 2013, through June 30th, 2014. All of our stuff is in there. We're closed out. The board is required to approve it by the 15th of September, which is five days from now. And then external auditors come and they audit it. And then they have to submit it to the state by December 15th. And then the auditors will come here, present to you, either in December or January. And then you will approve or disapprove the audit report that is presented to you. So what I have here is a summary of the different funds. We have all sorts of different funds here. And one fund that we will have next year is going to be right in here. It's going to be Fund 20. And there's going to be an 8 million. It's going to start out with zero. And we're going to, is going to have an $8 million budget at the end of this current year. But obviously, this is for last year. So for all these different funds that we have, this right here, Fund 01, these are our operations funds. This is what we run the district off of. Unrestricted and restricted. So here's our beginning fund balance, all of our revenues for the entire year, all of our expenditures for the entire year, and what our end balance is when we close the books. So then what I have here is, where were we at second interim? Because what I do, from the adopted budget to first interim, is I explain to you the changes. From first interim to second, I explain the changes. And from second interim to our unaudited actuals, I explain the differences. And that will, and these are the differences, no, these are the differences. These are the comparison. This is the difference here. And so I will be explaining this to you in following slides. So we concentrate on the general fund, because that's where all of our business is done. That's the most important thing, that we want to make sure that everybody understands, and that we are solvent in. This is what we're going to run, all of our school sites, everything from year to year. So this is the fund balance from our general fund. And this is the unrestricted portion, and the restricted portion. Of the unrestricted portion, we have a 5% reserve for economic uncertainty. We have cash that we have, so that we can actually pay things that we need to pay, small amounts, and prepaid expenditures. And then we have these other designations here. And we also have these, in the restricted, we have some, we have a fund balance. I'm going to be explaining to you what is in these other designations in the following slide, as well as what this end balance is, and what the total end balance is. But this is self-explanatory. It's a 5% reserve. And so this is where we are as we close the books. We have 22.6 million in the general fund, combined restricted and unrestricted. And it's, we're in a better shape than we were at the end of the second interim. So one by one, we'll be, I'll be explaining a lot of this to you. First off, this is that same, from the page before. This is just a graph of where all these are. Here's our unappropriated funds, designated for specific purposes. This is a very small amount here, the restricted funds, and our reserve for economic uncertainty. It's just so you have a visual of the same thing. So in the unrestricted portion of the general fund, we have a total difference from, since the second interim, of $2 million. We had increased revenues of nearly $60,000, a decrease of expenditures of $619,000, and a decrease of contributions to restricted programs of $1.5 million. I will explain the general summary of what the big items are. There are a lot of little items that make this up, but I'll explain the big ones to you. So first off, that $59,000 or $60,000 increase in revenues, which is, see right here. That's coming from, one, the revenue limit. We got $147,000 more in the revenue limit. This was because the gap funding for last year was 11.78%. After they closed out the year, and they adopted this year's budget, they decided to fund it at 12% instead of 11.78%. So the majority of this amount is a result of that. We have a reduction in federal revenues, and that's the MOM money. That's the Medi-Cal Administrative Assistant, Administrative something. It's called.
Medi-Cal Administrative Activities.
Activities. That's the word I was looking for. And actually, these funds, we were supposed to get this from 12, in 12-13. But the federal government then rolled back its requirements. It had all these things. You do this, figure out what it costs, and we will pay you for it. And so we did this as required. And then they said, you know what, after we did it, they said, well, we're going to change the rules, and we're going to make those rules retroactive. So they made the rules retroactive, but they said, but some of it, we're still going to pay you for, but we don't know just yet. So we went all through 13-14, and they still don't know. And so we are simply removing it. And we will recognize it, just like we recognize mandated costs in the past. When we get the money, show us the money, and we'll recognize it. Until then, this has gone up and down, from interim to interim, from report to report. And we've lost faith in knowing when we're going to get these funds, and how much of them we're going to get. So for the future, we will, we will be increasing the budget when we receive the funds.
Is it still good for us to increase those services, or provide them from the classroom?
Good for the students to have those services, whether we're reimbursed for them or not.
Right. A lot of those services, we are already, we're doing those services. But what we need to do is, we need to do the paperwork, and submit the paperwork, so that, which does take some time, so that those services will be paid for. So we have to do the services anyway. It's the paperwork. We don't have to do the paperwork, but then we for sure won't get any of this money. And then the state revenues, other than the, well, it's called revenue limit up here. It's not really a revenue limit anymore, but for lack of a better term, we'll keep that there. The lottery monies came in a little higher, so we've got an accounts receivable for additional lottery funds. And then for local revenues, we had, interest came in higher than we expected. And we have gains on investments. This is coming from the Lehman Brothers repayment to us. They've now finished repaying us, but not dollar-to-dollar. I think it ended up being like 20-some cents to the dollar. And then some PG&E rebates that we got. So we have additional funds there. So that's our $60,000 additional unrestricted revenues in the general fund. Then I'll move on to, this number here was that number you saw on the previous page, of a change in expenditures. And we are always going to have that. We do try to budget conservatively. Hopefully, we'll always be able to do that. I would much rather come to you and say, we've done better than worse. And that would really kind of be tough for me to do, to come back. Although one day, I might have to do that. We'll see. So anyway, we had expenditures budgeted for substitute teachers, and they came in a little bit lower. Classified as well. There was less extra pay and overtime for certain things. So that's been reduced. And then the benefits that go along with that. Now, of course, that looks a lot higher. We don't have 100% benefits. But then also, the post-employment benefits were, came in at a lower rate, because we do pay for them as we go as well. So that came in less. Social Security and workers' comp came in less as well. And then we have supplies, mostly carryover from school site budgets. Their site donations, those are their funds. And sometimes they get those donations closer to the end of the year, or the middle of the year. And they don't necessarily spend them in the current year. They may spend them in the following year. And their SLIP program as well. So those would be the supplies, services. Actually, there's the supplies, the $420,000. The services, also from site carryovers. Sites, our school sites budget most of their monies in either supplies or services. And sometimes they do some in substitutes and such for, in services, that they would choose. But most of it is in supplies or services. And so a big amount of those always come from the site carryovers. And then our legal expenses came in lower than we anticipated. And then something that you'll see every year, until we have completely paid off our copy machines, is, well, actually, no, you probably still have it, because it's the main, it's the service agreements as well. What happens is, we budget them in here, in the services, but we have to pay them, it's a weird thing. We have to pay them in other outgo. Don't ask me why we, it has to be done this way, but we budget it. The reason why we budget it in the services, so the school sites can see their budgets and see what they have. But then we, at the end of the year, we have to transfer the expenditures over to other outgo. So this offsets that. So it's just going from one place to another. The budget's in one place, and the expenditures end up going to another place. The budget's there so the school sites can see. We want them to see their budgets, right? We don't want them to budget something and say, okay, you can't even see it anymore. So, and of course, other capital outlay, that's nothing. And so that makes up our $619,000, $620,000 reduction in expenditures. So then the big one is the contributions to other programs. Special Ed. One day, maybe the county office of ed will actually be able to give us a really clear and correct estimate as to what their classes for special ed students cost. Of that amount, the $1.1 million difference, $563,000 of it was a reduction in the cost for the county programs. We are budgeting it based on what the county tells us. We could budget differently, but when it comes in right one day, I don't want to be the one telling you, oh, it was $300,000 more than we.
Yeah, I think six years ago, we had that situation, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we came to the board and said, we have to pay an extra $700,000. The county did not estimate correctly. So they've overcorrected. But they're trying to work their way back to a reasonable estimate.
Right. So also tuition to other districts. We have our kids in other districts. And then salaries and benefits that were for special ed came in less than anticipated as well. So that's the big one. Routine maintenance and repair, that's a really easy one, because we just transfer those funds over. We have to put a certain amount in, and so we transfer it over, and it's just that amount. And then the EIA program. So this is a really interesting one. You're not going to see this next year. Well, you'll see perhaps other restricted programs, but you won't see EIA on here. Because EIA is now part of the LCFF funding formula. But. But, because we still had monies from it in the previous year, we had carryover in the previous year, we set up the budget, plus, when we set up last year's budget, we really didn't know what we were going to have. We didn't know if we were going to have the LCFF or if we were going to continue on the old model of the revenue limit. So, we had to set up our budget according to what the law was at the time, and so, we had the revenue limit, we had all the different categorical programs, and we didn't recognize the LCFF type of funding. So, because we set up it in the previous, like the previous year, assuming we were going to get the EIA money as EIA money in Resource 7091, and because all of our principals know where that money is, we set the budget up there. And rather than during the year, make all the principals change all of their expenditures out of that and put it into an unrestricted 0791, which we now have set up, we decided we would leave it there and we would just fund it. We would fund the program that was, because the money was coming into unrestricted, we would make a contribution. So, that's what that's all about. It's a contribution to carry on that program. This year, it won't be there, and I'll show you something else in a minute, anyway. So, that's what makes up our contributions and our change, that's what our contributions are, that's what our change in our contributions is since the second interim. Okay, so, now, I'm going to show you what we have, what do we have that's locally defined as restricted in our fund balance? So, we have that, if you look back at this, back, 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 here, we said, "Other designations." So, that's what we're going to look at now, and then, we're going to look at this one, right? So, again, here's the other designations, and here's the restricted. And so, we're looking at these kind of things kind of one at a time here. All right. So, our locally designated funds are school site donations, which contributors have given to school sites, local individuals or businesses or whatever, for them to use for specific purposes, and so, those funds belong at the school site level. We are restricting that for that purpose, and they will get it. And then, also, the MAM monies that they had received and SIP monies. The school sites get their carryovers here, and that's what this is. Then, we have some, the math initiative funds. Now, you see this EIA fund again? This is the coding that it was before, 7091, and this is the site carryover, slightly different than the amount you saw here, 310 difference. And that's because, this is only the site carryover, it's not any of the district amount or anything. So, the sites will carry over those funds, but this number here will change to 0791, an unrestricted number for next year. Then, we have, year after year, I believe we started out with $800,000 being put away from the math program, and each year, we've drawn $200,000 from that, and so, this is our last, was our last year. This year now is the year that we'll be using this $200,000. We can always put more away later on, if that's what we decide, if that's what you decide we want to do. Doesn't mean the program's going to go away. It's now kind of being incorporated into that whole LCAP. So, this is just, the LCAP, this is our first year doing the LCAP. So, these funds are just coming over from the previous year. And then, we're saving money for textbooks, because where we used to get categorical program funds for textbooks, we are no longer getting that. That's got to come out of the LCAP as well. So, I, we will be increasing this, because that won't get us far. Okay, so then, the restricted fund balances, and you saw that. I won't go back all those slides again. So, these are actually still categorical programs that are restricted, and so, we cannot by law use these for any other purposes than what they're here for. And so, we have the lottery instructional materials, and we have that Common Core Standards implementation. We are really throwing a lot of money at that. We have till next September to use all these funds, right? September, end of September, and that's why we've got a lot of computers going out to the classrooms for the students, for the teachers. You've heard of all this many times. And then, the routine maintenance and repair, these are just other small ones. We have a lot less in categorical programs than we had before. As you can see, it's really the top two that are really the big funds. Okay, so now, these, and this is kind of for Joseph, Mr. Waters, understanding, all those, the fund balance that we had, they do not include these amounts, because these, I've got the word "grant" underlined here. A grant, we don't recognize the revenues until we spend the money, and it's just the way it is, and so, it's not in our fund balance. But, we have $395,000 that, in all these programs that we can use, it's just not in our fund balance, and we're not allowed to do that, so, to put it into our fund balance. So, most of them are federal, no child left behind title funds, what you see over here, and then, a little bit with the Medi-Cal and some very small amounts, but the dollar amount had to equal, so we got to put that $97 there. That's it. Do I have questions?
Looking at everything we have, and there's reserve money, and I don't see anything about sports being added back in. I just want to bring that conversation up. Where does that?
There, okay, so, this is only what we've actually spent.
Yeah, this is what we did in 1314.
Oh, this is past.
Yeah, and I think that conversation will come up as our next budget, yeah.
Okay.
That would be part of the LCAP, so, the Local Control Accountability Plan, where we're, how we're moving forward, and that's the community and the board and everybody working together on it.
Okay, beautiful.
This is the history class.
Yeah, this is the history class, if you want.
I have no questions.
Nada?
If nobody else has any questions, this does require our approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2013-14 audited actuals.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? That was unanimous. Thank you very much, Ms. Kessler. That was detailed.
The rule.
And that brings us to item six, the Architectural Engineering Services for the overhang replacement project at Daniel Webster, Thomas Edison, and Fernando Rivera Schools. Would you like to?
Yeah, I can speak to this a bit. So, several years ago, and this is right before Mr. Otidey and Mr. Ali joined the board, the district did an extensive site facilities sort of master plan. This improvement was on that list, and this is just approving the architect who will actually do the design portion of fixing that, because these plans also have to be submitted to the Department of State Architects. So, we need a certified architect to design how to do this. This firm has already done some work with identifying the issues, and so, we thought we would capitalize on not having to redo the portion that they've done and select them to complete the project.
This is related, if I recall correctly, to the fact that there are issues with rust and so forth in supports for these overhangs, and not surprising in our environment that, basically, as we all know, since we live in this neighborhood, anything metal will rust in minutes.
And these three schools were designed and built at the same time, so they have the same issues. Whenever there's an issue at one school, it's going to be an issue at the other two. They have the same, same kind of situation, both weather-wise as well as structurally.
Well, at least that should result in some economies of scale for repairing them. So, are there any questions about that contract?
Just to clarify, that Fund 21 is our bond fund, right?
It's not our bond fund. It is this state, the state, well, the state reimbursed us back in 2011, 2010, 11, for some work that we had done with the previous bond.
Okay.
And so, then, we decided, you know, that whole list of the master plan was being funded out of that initial, I think, was something like $12 million of reimbursements. So, that's from that fund. So, it's, it's there, and it's for the same purposes that the previous bond established as potential expenses.
Got it. So, Fund 21 was our bond before. What's the line item for our current bond?
It's also Fund 21, but there are different resource numbers within that fund that break out those two different expenditure areas.
Got it. So, we have our past money and our past bond reimbursement money and our current bond money
Correct.
Inside Fund 21, but are line itemed in different buckets. Understood.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Anybody need anything clarified? All right, could we have a motion?
Motion to approve Architectural Engineering Design Services for the overhang replacement project at Daniel Webster, Thomas Edison, and Fernando Rivera Schools.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Me.
Okay, great. That brings us down here, section four, Certificated Personnel, item three. We have an administrative appointment. Would you like to speak to that?
I would really like to speak to that. So, we do recommend approval of the appointment of Ms. Stephanie Martinez as Program Specialist for Student Services, and this would be effective September 1st. It's on the vice principal salary schedule, and it's for 205 workdays. The salary would be $91,446 and $1,100 for a master's degree. And as some of you who are here know, Ms. Martinez has been a counselor in this district for several years, and she really knows the needs of our students, so I'm really excited to hear that she may be appointed.
And how was this position created again?
It is part of our LCAP plan, and the funding's coming from the LCFF funds.
I believe we created this position at the previous meeting or two meetings.
We created it a long time ago, then we had to recreate it, because we decided to structure differently after we received special ed report, so, so it was, so, yes, it was a recent creation.
Okay. Well, I will give myself the pleasure of moving. Are there further questions?
I was going to say, well, are we going to hear from Ms. Martinez?
Well, it'd be appropriative after she's approved for her to speak.
So, first, I'm going to give myself the pleasure of making the motion that we appoint Ms. Stephanie Martinez, Program Specialist, Student Services, effective September 1st, 2014, at salary schedule as listed.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
No opposition. And now, did you wish to say anything?
Come up to the front, Ms. Martinez.
I'm assuming you're here for me. I'm really excited about this position, as I know most of you up here, and I'm just happy to have my family in town with me, which is exciting, and of course, past people that I have worked with, which is really nice. I'm just looking forward to still being a part of this district and still making positive change for our students and our families, as well as the staff that works at our, that work at our school site, so, wasn't prepared to speak. Thank you, and thank you for approving me. I'm really, really excited and, you know, open to hearing suggestions and ideas and working together.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we're so glad to have you.
Thank you.
We're getting there, folks. Section six, Board Policies. We're back for the second reading on the VPE 9270 Conflict of Interest.
I think the last one, there was no...
There was no concern or discussion?
No.
And there's still none.
Motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
No opposition. Consider them approved. Okay, and that's down here at the bottom of the agenda. Board member comments and reports? I think none of us had any earlier. Has anybody developed any reports in the meantime?
I just wanted to make a comment and just personally commend Ms. Martinez once again for her new position. I know that we, you know, spent a lot of time tonight talking about math and English language development, but if our students don't feel safe and welcome at school and don't have their other needs met, they can't attack their academics correctly. So, I'm happy that we created this new position, and congratulations once again.
Want to offer a congratulations also, and a quick question. Pressionist with you, is that a Dallas Cowboys hat?
Sorry.
No, it's okay. I'm a Dallas Cowboys fan. I like you.
The Dodgers fan.
All right, we have to steer away from the dangerous questions of sports teams and religion.
She got approved, right?
If anything, I want to echo on what Mr. Vidalis said earlier, the importance, how important it is to vote, and as you know, how important it is for all of us to vote. We have to make it cool for kids to understand how cool it is for our civic duty to vote. Let's be honest, 98% of people don't vote. That's just true. And where are your salaries coming from? The state. There's nothing that we can do on our side. They tell us some number, and then, we just kind of do something about it, and then, they change their mind on it. You've heard it on the state level and on the federal level. There's nothing we can really do about it. But where we can affect it is exposing our kids to voting and how cool it is to vote and not to let go of that, because if we do not vote, the vote will be made for us. If we do not have a seat at the table, we will be on the menu. It's true. It's true. It's true. You know? And so, we have to let everybody know and tell the kids that it is just as important to vote as it is for the SATs, as the APs, and anything like that. It's that important. And like I've always said, if you need someone to speak or knock on doors or lockstep with you when we go to Sacramento, let me know. I'm going to be there, because it is important for us to vote. Thank you.
And I still have nothing for the, except that I thought that that was D for Denali, but, you know. My priorities are different. Okay, and do we have any cards for people wishing to address the board on our closed session items before we? Okay, then, we are going to recess, end the public meeting, and we will reconvene to the closed session in about five to 10 minutes. So, thank you very much. I'll leave it.